So we'll have a city attorney if you can speak to the closed session item.
Certainly, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. At closed session, staff requested that the evaluations will be rolled into the 19th meeting because not everybody, not all of the council members were present at five o'clock. So the closed session didn't take place.
Okay, thank you. And then, does media team need like extra time? Or do we just go straight? Oh, go straight, okay. Good evening and welcome to the study session of the City of Council of the City of Marina Valley, Marina Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Marina Valley and Marina Valley Housing Authority. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call the study session meeting to order on February 12, 2019 at 6:03 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please stand.
One please honor our flag in recognition and following by saying, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Frank. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protembaka.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kuzanowicz, City Attorney.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Patty Evans, Planning Official.
Abdul Alamin, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of, I have a cold, I'm sorry.
What happened there?
I have a cold.
You're sick? Okay, that's okay. All right, okay. All right.
We don't mean to laugh.
Okay. This is now time for public comments on matters on the agenda only since this is a study session. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Please complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the City Clerk. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the City Council. And I ask that speakers keep their comments respectful towards each other and the members of the audience remain courteous towards those at the podium. The two items that we have tonight that you can speak about is the budget presentation and the overview of shopping cart collection program. So Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Rafael Burguena.
Just one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and residents and guests, just in case. I want to talk about A2 because I'm quite sure I know the subject pretty well through the campaign. I've seen quite a few things out there, what people do with shopping carts. You know, I know that we have a program because we had this discussion probably a year ago or so about someone collecting them and getting paid monthly. My thing, because we saw quite a bit of in 2018, there's a lot of people that use a shopping cart to collect junk, whether it's clothing, mattresses, chairs. I mean, there's a lot that you can see on a shopping cart all last year, all over the place. So I know we have a collecting agency that gets the shopping carts when he sees them. My question to you, council, is does he pick up the shopping carts with junk in them and removes them somewhere? Or do we continue to see them throughout the corners throughout the city? That's what we saw last year. Shopping carts full of junk dumped all over the city with junk in it. What I want to know, does he pick those up or does he fly by them and pick up only the empty ones? That is a question that you need to find out, okay? Now, I know we cannot blame the business owners because we have a lot of residents that don't drive and they do borrow the shopping carts to bring back their groceries home. And that's a great way, you know, unless they have a little cart like Back East. But the problem is that we're finding them in corners with a lot of stuff in them. And I want to know, is that going to be taken care of? Because that's all over the city. And that's my issue with shopping carts. And I know they're all over the place and some people ride with four or five of them in some areas. And I've seen quite a bit all last year. So that's my concern. I want to know, we're paying the person who's collecting them, is he doing his entire job, you know, removing the shopping cart with clothing and junk? I mean, it's a lot of stuff on them. So we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you Rafael. And we'll allow staff to do a little research on that and see if, unless you have a response right now, but so we'll come back. But basically, the question is, when we pick up the carts, do we pick them up with items in it? Or do they just pass by those items and only pick up the empty ones? All right, so we'll go ahead and get straight to our business item. And we'll go with the first one, which is the fiscal year 1920 and 2021 budget presentation, A1. And, you know, we'll have several of these, you know, throughout the next month, months. But again, we're just starting it off to kick it off. So report of financial and management services.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council Members. As you mentioned, this will be a brief discussion. We do touch base on the budget on quarterly opportunities in many instances with the finance sub. So this will just provide the foundation for us as we move forward.
And then I will ask that we just ask our questions just after the presentation.
The City of Marina Valley is very proud of its award-winning budget and financial management practices. We've continued six years of balanced budgets and we're looking forward to moving forward, hopefully with a balanced budget over the next two years. As we look at the calendar, as you mentioned, we've, we're starting off the public comment period now with tonight's meeting. We'll be moving forward to town hall meetings and other items. Internally, we've been working on this to look at the foundations and the process to make sure that we keep things moving smoothly for the public as well. Some of the key areas that we're going to engage citizens similar to prior years, we do have the Online Balancing Act available. Through that program, individuals are allowed to play with the budget numbers, give us options, submit balanced budgets, different perspectives. We've also had the town hall, telephone town hall meeting. We look at those inputs from the public to see if there are things we need to address. But as with many items, we continue through the finance sub, additional town hall meetings, study sessions, along with public hearings and public meetings. In the budget process, some of our building blocks that we continue to focus on as our key principles, it's maintaining a balanced general fund budget. We've been successful in doing this and we try to structure every budget, balance, making sure we meet the needs and maintain services within the community. The other item we look at is maintaining the momentum of our priorities. As council had adopted this strategic plan, it is key and essential towards what we do in moving forward with our budget. The other items, we'll kind of talk a little bit more as we go through the other slides, some of the fiscal health of the city, along with revenues and expenditures and how they affect us moving forward. So what we use is one tool that the California League of Cities developed through Michael Coleman, his fiscal health model. We did this analysis and want to give you a brief summary. When you look at the general fund, everything is positive. What you will note here though is there are a couple of things that I just highlighted as yellow that we want to always continue to monitor. Our assets and our infrastructure are very key to the future of the city and we always want to be aware of that. So I've highlighted the streets here. The other thing is fixed cost and labor cost. Some of our largest cost concerns going forward are contractual items such as public safety, including police and fire. When you look outside the general fund towards Zone A or Parks and Community Services, MVU and special districts, they kind of echo the same areas. It's infrastructure and assets that we need to maintain, whether it's landscaping and parks, irrigation systems, or our Marina Valley utility infrastructure. So those are the areas that we really focus on, but overall, our health is consistently positive. When you look at the citywide practices and conditions, this is what's kept us balanced for the last six years, returned our reserve funds and kept us in a good place of providing more service. You'll see these green across the board. And when you get into the adopted budget, you look at some of the key strengths of the city. So in building the budget, we look at our existing reserve funds. Through the recession, we have recovered those reserve fund levels and we allocated some of these to specific purposes. This helps designate those funds for future recessions or other economic concerns that we have to look, unfortunately, look to the future for. As you'll see, our cash flow unassigned is right at 21%, so we're above our minimum. We also have our emergency fund and our rainy day fund. So we've got those designated just in case to maintain our fiscal stability in the long run. As you look towards the revenues of the city, I think we've kind of echoed over the last couple of years, property taxes is our number one revenue source. Thirty-one percent of our revenue comes from property tax dollars. That's now followed by sales tax dollars at 18% and our utility users' tax. That utilities users' tax has become less and less of the revenue in the general fund as we begin to develop other revenue sources. The TOT, as we look towards the future of Measure M or the cannabis measure provides revenue, we'll have those items as well. And just to kind of show you on the trend line, you'll see property tax dollars have continued to grow. As we came out of the recession, this is our strongest area. As we talk about development services and all of the new projects being built, when they become vertical, we start to see property tax dollars and this has been the growing area. This is also nice because if a recession or anything comes in the future, these dollars lag in losing any revenue for us. So it's a good stable source. Our second largest revenue source now is sales tax. Again, that's an indicator of how our economy has grown in the city, new retail, new businesses throughout. One of the key things just to know is sales tax dollars are very volatile. And so when things ever flow, go up or down, we'll see that volatility come through in different areas. And that's why those reserve funds are very essential to address those issues. Now, looking a little bit deeper in property tax dollars, I always like to show this because unfortunately, our citizens pay a lot of property tax dollars, but those property tax dollars do not come to the city. When we look at every dollar that goes through taxes, really, a lot of this goes to education, the county, other services. For a typical house within the City of Marina Valley, we may see about 10% of those property tax dollars come to us or about $300 a year. So that's an annual basis what we're receiving on those. And when we talk about City Marina Valley being a low property tax city, we added this chart because what it shows is that when we get a dollar of property tax dollars, the amount that, let's say, City of Banning gets, they get a dollar twenty-nine. So they're getting 29% more for everything we get. Or if we look at development services, they need to work 29% harder just to get the same dollars that the City of Banning would get. When you look at our sales tax dollars, just to kind of recap for these, most of the dollars go to either the state or the county. The City of Marina Valley gets 12.9 cents for every sales tax dollar. The rest, the significant majority goes up to the state or is funneled through county transportation or dollars that go through the state back to county services. So jumping to the expense side of the equation, with the City of Marina Valley, one of the things is our budget really focuses on public safety. One of the things though that I've added in this equation is public safety is not just police and fire. Public safety also includes public works and community development. The goal of public works is to make sure that we have infrastructure in place to allow police and fire to get to your location, but it's also for the safety of the citizens in all of their activities. Again, with community development, part of the inspections that we do for new development are health and safety concerns. We want to make sure those buildings stand and do not fall in a stiff wind or any other situation. So a lot of this comes really into the long-term public safety. When we look at the other areas of the general fund, really, it falls into general governmental services, which is everything it takes to operate the city, and then some other non-departmental which get into replacement of assets and those items. When we look at the expense trends, we do see the top line here, the blue one, is police. We do see a drop back in 1314. We had done some adjustments to police staffing in those years, reduced some cost. Now, over the past couple of budgets, we've added back to police services. That along with cost increases, we're pretty much back up to where we were in 1213. When you look at the red line for fire, what you see is that little bump coming in 1718. That's the addition of the new fire squad. As you look to public works and community development, community development's really tied with new projects going on through the city and public works. Some of that really reflects maintenance and operations, the fleet, as we replaced items, but it also includes transportation and capital projects. And when we take a step back and we look at the regional economy, some of the other factors that might indirectly affect us, we have to look at what's going on outside. At the start of fiscal year 1920, we will have been in a recovery session for more than 10 years, which is pretty much the longest ever recorded. So we've always got to be concerned of looking towards the future. Some of the key things, office market, vacancy rates are still high, retail market, there's still threat of e-commerce and logistics, that tariff situation that we're dealing with China until there's a resolution, that always has some potential impact in the future that we have to be aware of. In looking at none, kind of a little bit more closer to home, Marina Valley's established a little bit better than the regional economy. We've seen good growth in non-residential and residential buildings. We've created a good foundation to hopefully carry us through the next period. One of the things I did want to point out on this last one is our housing market from the recession has only recovered 71% of their property tax values. That big growth that you see in property, or in property taxes, is primarily due to new development. So we've been developing at a significant rate and that's been bridging that gap. So as we see new development occur and we see property taxes recover, that'll help carry us through the next couple of years. And getting a little bit more into the budget, one of the things as we look towards kind of the policies or philosophies in developing the budget, a key thing is the strategic priorities set forth by the City Council and the City Strategic Plan Momentum of Vow. I won't touch base on all six of these as I think we've all heard from those updates. The other thing is in the recession, one of the strategies of the city was to focus on greater efficiencies, focus on technology and other means to make sure that, kind of what we hear from the public, is doing more with less, but doing it effectively. Our staffing was reduced during the recession and we've been very effective at maintaining services to the public at this lower number by complementing it with technology, training and other contracted services. So this has kept us lean and mean, absent a better analogy there. When you look at public safety, particularly the police department, our ratios are still good. What this doesn't account for too is the use of the citywide camera system, which has been very effective in solving a lot of crimes as well. This does include the addition in the last budget of a couple of police positions. And as we begin to get permit revenues through Measure M and the cannabis permits, we'll see additional public safety or police services coming through that as part of their permit One of the big key things that we have to look at when we look at police moving forward, our trend has been 5% to 7%. In the last couple of years, we're closer to a 7% annual increase. The County Board of Supervisors has indicated some additional cost pass-throughs. So when we look at this at first glance, we're looking at approximately 9.5% increase year over year for the next three years. So as you can see, that's 28.5% increase or 15 million over the cumulative three years. It's about a $5 million increase for each year of this next two-year budget. When we look at fire, our numbers now include the addition of the new squad that the council added last year. That's six positions and the one vehicle. And just as a refresher, we have our seven fire stations throughout the city to provide balanced service, although we do tend to see the majority of our calls within that triangle. So it gives you an idea where fire services are mostly being delivered. And the, with the fire budget, initially, what we're looking at is an estimated 5% annual contract increase. That number, we're still validating. We haven't got the official estimates, but this is in line with what we've estimated in historical years. And I always point to some of the things with police and fire, there's always MOU negotiations with some of their unions and other things. As we talked about, police passing through other costs, we want to keep our eyes open as we look towards the CAL FIRE and other cost recovery that they may want to do through their contract cities. How do we balance this equation when we have revenues growing mostly through property taxes, a little bit of sales tax, and then the expenses increasing for these items? It's been through really our development services and economic development. Through the last couple of years, this gives you an idea of really the key growth areas in our city, some of the nice, not just new businesses, but expansions to existing businesses, which really echoes that Marina Valley is a great place to do business. In the pipeline, we've got many things under construction in the process. My favorite is the quarter. It's going to add hotels, gas station, restaurants, a little bit of everything that really helps with the diversified revenue growth. As you see, there's many others as well. But that little graphic on the bottom, I always like to echo this one. When economic development walks in the door and tells you they have a new project, I've got to put everything on hold because we might not get that revenue for three years. So always hold your breath when he tells you that because we can't spend it until it comes in. So beyond what's under construction, we always have a pipeline of future projects. As I said, development services, economic development, the council and all of city staff are out there working with developers to make sure that, you know, we're attracting businesses to Marina Valley now and in the future. This gives you a couple of projects that we have out there. There's always additional hotels and restaurants we're looking at, gas stations, and one of our key developments, the World Logistics Center, as we look to see development in the future. So kind of to recap what we see with revenues, what we see with the economic trends, as we start the building blocks of the budget, we look at sales tax being steady. We've seen growth over the last couple of years, but the retail market's cooling down. We can bring in a little bit more business, but we'll see that a little bit slower than what we've had in past years. Property taxes, we tend to see the Prop 13 increase of the 2% along with new development. So that new development is key. Our utilities users' tax used to be a much larger percentage of the general fund. We've been diversifying revenues, bringing in TOT and other areas and new development, and that's making that less and less. So it's nice to, again, have other revenue sources to depend on for the operations of the city. As we look towards the expense trends, as I mentioned, public safety is one of our largest concerns that we look at with these contracts. The police could essentially go up 9.5%. We're still talking with them, seeing what we can whittle out of that. Again, with fire, we're looking at 5% and we'll see where we can bring that down. But public works, community development, other operations, we essentially try to keep them flat as we roll this budget over into the next two years. So long range really, expenditures grow, revenues at a lower rate, and just as in past years, economic development and having construction and business partners in our community is the key to balancing the budget. As I show the graph from before, as we look at our long trend, you can see that lovely recession on the far left where the blue line is revenues and the red lines is expenditures. We've fixed that. We've gone through six years of balanced budgets. We're looking forward to another two years. It's been a little bit closer in the last couple of years, very tight on our budget. We've been actively managing. The council has been looking at quarterly budgets and adjusting things to make sure we're not only building reserves, but we're reinvesting strategically into the community for streets and other services. And as we look towards the future, we want to just make sure that we continue that partnership with all of our development community to keep things growing in Marina Valley. After tonight's study session, we do have, on February 20th, we have a town hall meeting. Essentially, finance will be presenting this same exact presentation to the public. So for those individuals that couldn't make it here this evening, they'll have another opportunity to come and ask questions and review the presentation. We will be coming back with finance sub, looking for information through Balancing Act from the public, and really looking for council's direction as we move forward with the budget on different items through different meetings. And with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thanks so much, Marshall. Just a quick question, do you happen to know what the pre-recession, like if we're back to our pre-recession levels as far as revenue, like close to that? I saw, I think it went back to like 2011, but I was just curious, 2007, if you have the information, if not, that's fine.
Generally, we're pretty close to where we are. Our reserves are up, the revenues and expenditures are near, but it's a different operational structure from what we had, from reducing a lot of the personnel cost and different things. We're operating at a more efficient level.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Marshall, I got, you know, people when they hear about raising taxes, they kind of like freeze, like, ah, more taxes, more taxes. It's kind of curious. I know there's local cities in the area that has increased their sales tax half percent or gas tax half percent to pay for certain items for the city. If you were to raise, let's say, your sales tax a half a percent, does the city keep that 100% revenue or does some of that still go to the state or federal or county?
Yes, Councilmember, the nice thing is when we increase a local property tax, we get to keep the share of that tax. Sorry, sales tax, thank you.
Sales tax, yeah.
I wish it was property tax too, but, sorry.
We can't get around that.
But with the, yeah, with the sales tax component, so similar to when we increase the TOT, we keep that share. If we, like other jurisdictions that went out with a measure for sales tax, like the City of Riverside, they get to keep that portion, which has a significant impact to their general fund.
And that could be designated for just a certain projects?
Well, one of the things to look at is there's a special tax or a general tax. If it's done as a general tax, it's a simple majority, it goes into the general fund and you make that decision of where it goes through allocating your budget. If it's a special tax, it requires two-thirds approval from the registered voters and can only be used for that purpose.
The question I ask that is because, you know, our roads are deteriorating quicker than we can repair them. And I understand we got SB 1 money coming in, but that's not a cure for our roads. It definitely not. And I've been asked, well, why can't we come up with some extra money? And again, when you start talking about taxes, raising taxes, sales tax, everybody just kind of frowns on it. But that's something that we might consider looking at if we do keep that revenue for here, do something like that where we raise the sales tax a half percent, and we could do that for the roads, fix our roads faster. Or there's other issues that we have in our city we can use. So that's something I like to look at and maybe our council would, you know, definitely look into that also. The next question I have is public safety. In the past years, we have been told by the Sheriff's Union that, or administration, that they're going to raise 8%, 10%, but we haven't seen that, have we, in the last two, three years?
The last couple of years, they've told us about 8% to 10%. We've seen numbers close to that bottom number. We haven't seen it all the way up to the max.
Up to the top.
We have new Board of Supervisors, we have a new sheriff, we'll have some dialogues to see where that projection will go. Hopefully, it's better than what they've presented to us already.
So it's good to say at this point, you know, always reach for the top and then we can always work our way down on that. Because I know that I've been also asked by several residents that, why can't we have our own police department? And it's not that easy. And the cost is just outrageous to start up your own police department. So we don't anticipate 10%, 12% in the coming years, even though we forecast it, it's just not going to happen. I don't believe it's going to happen, but.
Councilmember, if I might add, as was mentioned, there is a new sheriff and new members on the Board of Supervisors. Information that we were given about the increases that the county was looking at was prior sheriff's administration, prior Board of Services, Board of Supervisors. One of the things that really caught our attention is when they were talking about that, the real cost inflator was a proposal that they were considering that would pass along costs to contract cities for services that had been provided already within the base rate. And so that's something, obviously, we were engaged in some very dynamic discussions with our colleagues at the county. So that's, we have our eye on that. We haven't seen a revised proposal since the change on the board or the sheriff's department, but the mayor and council should please rest assured that we're watching that very, very closely.
And property tax, of course, we, you had mentioned that the 71% has been holding steady because of new development. When we build warehouses or when businesses come into the city, it has nothing to do with property tax, does it? We don't collect any money from them, do we?
Yes, with every new development, as the property is assessed by the county assessor, we're collecting about 10% of their property taxes. So you look at their normal ad valorem, it's 1% of their assessed value. We get 10% of that 1%.
So we do get money from warehouses?
Yes, we do.
And all that stuff too. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. And a follow-up question to that regarding property taxes. You mentioned that it's increased, it's increased because of the development that we have in the recent years. Now, what is the split as far as between residential and commercial and industrial? Are we seeing that industrial is, is catching up or outpacing residential? Or where, where does that split with property taxes?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me on the actual split. What I can tell you, though, is we've seen much more development coming in industrial areas. That tends to be large AV or assessed values for those developments. And that seems to be a lot of the impact, where houses might incrementally give us a little bit. A million square foot building is going to increase our taxes a little bit more, so.
And even if they're sitting vacant, we're, they're still being assessed property taxes, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. My next question is in regards to the utility users tax. In the presentation, it mentioned that it's decreased. And so my question is, why? Is it because some programs that we have going on? Because we still have, you know, houses being built that are plugging into MVU. So why has the utility users tax decreased?
We see a couple of things occurring here. The utility users tax has basically been stable about 16 million a year. That held through the recession and continues to hold today. That 16 million is a little bit less of the general fund as the general fund expenditures begin to grow and other revenues grow. So it used to be 20% or so of the general fund, now it's a much lower percent. But in that number, what we also see with the utility taxes, a component of that is cell phones. Another part is cable TV. Well, as you start streaming videos, we're not receiving taxes on those videos. So we're starting to see a slight decline in that. But most of the utility tax really gets paid by businesses, so we don't see an exponential effect. But i- it is slowing and decreasing.
Thank you. And my last question has to do with the TOT, well, the hotel taxes. If we've seen any, since that went into place and it was implemented, have we seen any changes as far as usage? Now that the taxes are higher, do we see any changes? Or is it holding steady as far as people using our hotels? Has it gone down? Is it increasing?
If you recall, when the city council presented to voters the option to increase the TOT, it went from 8% to 13%, which fell in line with all of the adjacent jurisdictions. So the tax rate itself wouldn't really have an impact in occupancy rates in those hotels. The only thing that's really going to impact that is supply and demand in the future.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor. Marshall, thank you for that presentation. I was hoping you could share that PowerPoint presentation with the city council members. And I had a question concerning cannabis, Measure M. I wanted to know what were the projected revenue sources from that to include taxes and fees that could potentially have the, the impact that we've projected to have in, for our budget?
With regards to revenue, there's two components. For every cannabis permit, their annual permit fee is approximately $58,000. That fee is really to offset their direct impact or cost to the city. So some of that goes towards police services to monitor those areas. Some of it goes towards finance for the financial audits of those businesses and the ongoing monitoring. Another component really goes to code services additionally to support those operations and make sure they're compliant with the rules. So that just offsets their direct cost. When you look at revenue that goes into the general fund, we estimated with Measure M that it was approximately $2.2 million that the general fund would see moving forward. So as we get those permities coming through the system, I believe we had 12 or 13 in the CUP process. Once they're able to open their doors, then we'll start to see revenue trickling in on those components. The more permits, the better. What we'll have to look at is kind of really where that trend is and what we're going to see moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I might, a question was asked, and I've got a little bit of information. Question pertained to how much of our property tax is based on residential versus industrial? We got a report from HDL, and these are the, the stats they came up with as of FY 1819. Residential represents about 71% of all of the value, development value in our community. Commercial industrial is about 20%. So we are still working with a table that was set many, many decades ago when Marina Valley was envisioned. It, it was primarily set up as a residential, a bedroom community, if you will. And so what you're seeing is we're still predominantly residential. But all the gains that have been made under the council's leadership have really boosted, are beginning to really make a difference in our revenues because it's boosting the commercial industrial segment of our, our taxable values. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and move to the next item here, which is overview of shopping cart collection program. We'll have report of community development department.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, I'd like to introduce Steve Alvarado, our Code and Neighborhood Services Division manager, and he will be providing the presentation for you this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, good evening. Tonight, I bring forward the shopping cart presentation for review.
Well, I don't know, it sounded okay at first, but I don't know, it's starting to kind of go down. I don't know if it, maybe you got to get a little closer.
All right. How's that, is that better?
Oh, that's a lot better.
Not too long.
Yeah, just speak really into it.
Absolutely. Tonight, I bring forward the shopping cart presentation for your review. The main objective of the shopping cart collection is to control the limit and limit the blight, maintain carts for their intended purposes for customers to use at the shopping centers, if you will. Public safety as well, as many of these carts are abandoned in the public right of way and many times in the streets. So when police and fire are rolling to an emergency, they're having to swerve around these carts. So it is an issue. The additional option is to review and amend the existing ordinance to enhance business participation. The current ordinance was approved in January of 2012. It only pertains to the businesses that were enacted after that date. So previous businesses with 10 or more carts were grandfathered in and weren't subject to the current ordinance. The ordinance does prevent the removal for those that are participating currently. There is a plan that, that they have to abide by. Keeps the inventory onsite as best as possible. There has to be signs on the carts. Usually, you'll see those on the seat flaps where you put the kids. It'll have the store name, location, store number, and also who to call in case you find an abandoned shopping cart on that plate. There's also preventative measures in this actual ordinance, part of the shopping cart plan. The current ordinance also has retrieval operations. Currently, it's limited to a one-mile radius around the stores. Stores are to respond within 24 hours, and they're to provide additional services such as locking mechanisms, cart retrieval, security, attendance to police the parking lot so they don't leave the lot. These are some of the preventative measures. You have cart corrals, bollards, posts, coin-operated machines, which one of our local stores utilizes, customer service reps, security patrols, and also the wheel locking mechanisms. Next slide is representative of the, the past service that we've had. Basically, the contract was for six hours a day, seven days a week, which provided 42 hours a week of shopping cart patrolling by the third-party vendor. There was also a 1-800 number and a website that was provided to both the community and internal staff members as well. The average is 17 carts per day were recovered, 115 per week, 500 per month, which averaged out to 6,000 carts recovered per year. And these counts do not include that, the other stores themselves, which have their shopping cart vendors that patrol the streets and recover them on behalf of the store. So this is just with the, the city vendor that was participating, participating in our program. The disposition of the carts, as I said previously, currently, we're still at 500 carts average per month, 31 days. The carts are held for 31 days before we could dispose of them. We are required by law to business and profession codes to notify each store when we do recover their carts. We have been doing that with current staff levels in code, calling the stores, speaking to managers, advising them that the carts are being held at the city yard. We're currently recovering all shopping carts that we recover at the city yard and maintaining a log and inventory. 440 carts are recovered by the stores per month. So they're sending out their contractors to pick up the carts at the city yard after they've been notified. 60 of these carts are actually recycled. I did confirm they are recycled, crushed for plastic or metal by waste managers. We have a partnership with Waste Management that comes in and actually recycles these carts. The first option I'm going to present is, the collection option, is Option 1, the city operated program. We were asked to look into that as well as other options. The carts will continue to be impounded at the city yard. The city operated program basically has three part-time people patrolling the streets. They'll work six-hour shifts, 18 hours per week. And it'll also include two administrative staff to recover the phone calls, emails, and web-based complaints to dispatch these people to recover them, to the team members. They will be taken to the cart, as I previously said. Annual cost for staffing is $125,502. The annual vehicle cost was estimated at $8,860 for the monthly lease and fuel costs on average of $2,000 a month. Projected annual program cost is $134,362 in total. That's for the city operated program. Option 2 is a third-party vendor, which we're currently using right now. This is a recommended option for many reasons. They'll continue to impound the carts at the city yard. We're going with an estimated $4.28, I'm sorry, $4.25 per cart to pay them for recovering these carts, to take them to the yard and, and storing them there. We'll maintain seven days a week service. At the estimated 600 carts per month, the projected annual cost will be $30,600 if they maintain 600 carts a month. That number may increase or decrease, just depending on how many carts they're recovering per month, so. And we have received two bids from qualified vendors. We did RFP back in October, just to have those ready, so. Current and projected costs. Current costs, we have a temporary contract. As of July 1st, we, we tried a program of doing it in-house and seeing how many carts we can recover, having the stores do it. We got a lot of calls for service in code because there were carts everywhere from July 1st to the end of September. So we did enact a temporary contract, which is $2,000 a month. That contract is valid up until March 31st of 2019. Okay, so we have about a month and a half left on that contract. The projected collection rate will be estimated at $2,550 at 600 carts roughly a month. The city program would also have a, a part-time person working at the yard Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to allow for the contractors that are picking up carts to come into the yard, drop them off. They'll sign for them. We're, we're developing, you know, a plan for that if we do move forward with that. It'll also allow for the stores to come pick them up during regular business hours, which is required by the Business and Profession Code. We have to allow six hours per day during regular business hours for the stores to come and pick up their carts as well. So Monday through Friday, we'll have that available for the stores to come pick up their carts as well. The last discussion topic would be the ordinance amendment. The recommendations would be for all stores with 10, 10 or more carts to submit a cart retrieval plan to the city. That plan would be subject to city review and approval, and any recommendations or corrections that may be implemented. There's also an option to cite non-compliant stores after a phased rollout. A phased rollout would be over time, and that would be in collaboration with the existing stores, discussions, and outreach with them to work towards bringing everybody into compliance. We would further remove the one-mile radius requirement and make it citywide. They would have to be required to pick up their carts, no matter if it's 10 miles down the road or half mile down the road. We're also looking at annual fee to subsidize program costs. Again, we would do an outreach program with the businesses in collaboration to bring them, you know, into compliance. As I said, Option 1 is a city operated program. That was roughly $134,000 if we did it in-house with city staff, hiring city staff. Option 2, which is a recommended option, would be continuing with a third-party vendor and hiring a city weekend coverage, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, part-time, to collect carts, inventory them, and allow for recovery of stores to pick them up. Also would be a program enhancement of amending the existing ordinance to implement all these changes, removing the one-mile radius and making it citywide, as well as implementing all stores to participate with 10 or more carts in this program. Thank you, and I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, if I might just, I'm sorry. Okay, if I might just chime in just a little bit for context. We have been doing this the same way for years. And, and I, I believe with every fiber, every fiber in me, that each of you would agree with us that we are getting marginal results. We believe it's time to energize this program and try some very different things. Option 2 we're recommending because it changes the whole basis for the program. Right now, we pay for, for cart retrieval service on an hourly basis. Whether one cart or 50 carts are collected, we pay the same. The contract structure we're recommending to you basically puts a bounty on shopping carts. There's no better way to incentivize pickup than to put a per-cart fee in a contract. And the more that are picked up, the fewer that are on our streets. And, and under the current system, we're paying for retrieval, stores are paying for retrieval, and it's still not working. So the new approach, coupled with really toughening up our ordinance, the, taking away some of the limitations that were put in place when the ordinance was first passed, where businesses were grandfathered, where, where, where their, their radius for pickup was, was limited to a mile. Carts travel more than a mile, not just here but anywhere. So you can see, we're really trying to throw some creativity and some energy at it to try to, to achieve what we all want, and that's a city without shopping carts on our street. So I, I appreciate the work done by staff to prepare this presentation for you, to, to gather all the data. And we look forward to, to your discussion, your questions, and, and your guidance on how best to move forward. Thank you.
So with the Option 1, which is the 30,001, that includes the weekend coverage?
Option 1 is, yeah, Option 2, yes. That provides the weekend coverage so that carts can be dropped off and picked up.
And that's the bounty?
The bounty is the $4.25 per cart.
That would be, but I mean, that would all be part of Option 2?
Absolutely.
And then, with the ordinance amendment of removing the one-mile
Yes.
radius thing.
Yes.
So that's the recommendation from staff?
Yes, Option 2 and, and refine our ordinance to, to get our arms around this problem.
With the bounty and the weekend coverage, okay?
Mayor, can I clarify one thing on that? Option 2 is a projected allocation of 30,600 at 600 carts. It doesn't include $15,000 allocation for weekend staff, so that would be on top.
So that would be the, in addition, because we, if I recall, I think it was last July or June, we added the weekend. Wasn't it? I, I think it was an extra cost that we added.
Yeah, this would be an extra cost.
To do the weekend, to include the weekend and the bounty?
Well, the other thing to, to please keep in mind, that the, the, the cost is based on 425 carts at the amount we expect to retrieve. If we retrieve more, our cost will go up. But then again, we're cleaning up our neighborhoods and our, our arterials by getting the carts off the street.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Baca?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Alvarado, for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back to retrieval options on your PowerPoint presentation?
Yes. You want me to go over Option 1 or Option 2?
It's, well, it says retrieval options. Do you have?
Okay, let's see here. It was one that had all of them.
Oh, it had all of them?
Yeah, it was towards the Yeah, it was towards the beginning.
Right there? All three of them?
Option two.
So there's the collection options. Option one is a city operated program.
A retrieval option.
Oh. The collection options, is that the one you're looking at? Or maybe we go further back?
I'm pretty sure it was retrieval option.
Okay, let me go back a little bit further.
Yes, towards the front.
Chart that said retrieval operations, yeah, there you go.
Oh, okay.
What does that currently one-mile radius mean? Can you be more descriptive?
Yes, ma'am. That is actually currently referencing the current code. Current code has a one-mile radius around the store's perimeter that they're obligated to patrol. So anything outside of that one-mile radius, if it was outside of one of the local businesses with ten or more carts, they would not get it. So, and historically, our shopping cart vendor would pick those up and take them to the yard now. Or previously, years ago, we used to take them back directly to the store.
And if I could also add into that, Mayor Protem, our ordinance is very specific with the requirements that businesses with ten or more carts have to follow. Like Steve was mentioning, the one-mile radius, it also talks about the cart containment and other options that they can choose from. Excuse me, but I also want to mention that we're very restricted in the language that we can write in our ordinance with respect to state law. So we always have to keep that in mind, which is found in the business and profession codes, which is specifically related to shopping carts of all things, so we have to keep that in mind, too. And what the staff has done with this analysis on Title IX, they've taken that into consideration. Just wanted you to know that also.
So this criteria here, the one-mile radius, respond within twenty-four hours and provide additional services, are the businesses, for example, let's say Winko, their shopping carts might end up at the gardeners', right? So they don't have to pick them up because it's beyond one mile?
If it's, yeah, it's beyond the one mile, it's the current ordinance. And Winko would be one of the newer stores after January two thousand and twelve, which would have a shopping cart retrieval plan.
Okay, and then respond within twenty-four hours. Who calls the businesses?
It could be the city, code compliance, or a report from a citizen via the mobile app or web complaint or a phone call. We would contact the businesses.
It's the city, okay. And what is that? We provide additional services?
Additional services would be some of those things I've previously mentioned, such as wheel locking mechanisms, ballards, cart corrals, things along that line.
And if you can go to collection options?
Certainly.
Right there. Okay, what is that? One hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars paid for?
Sure, absolutely. I have those exact numbers here.
Protem, while he's looking that up, that would be the cost to operate the program if we use city employees to basically become the cart retrieval service?
I understand, I'm just wondering how many people are we talking about, and it's part-time, I think I heard you say?
Count and Mayor Protem, that is correct. That would be to hire all part-time staff. It would include three part-time maintenance worker one positions that would work three six-hour shifts, so a total of eighteen hours per week per employee times three. Two hundred and sixteen dollars, two hundred and sixteen hours, I apologize, total for them. And that calculates to fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents, just for the three maintenance worker. It further includes two part-time clerical positions, two twenty-hour shifts, which is a hundred and sixty hours per month on average, which is thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. That equates to eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars annually. The truck lease, as we said, was eighty-eight sixty, and we have to include PERS calculations, which is typically around fifty percent of what the salaries are, which comes out to one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five oh two. And then what the truck comes out to, one thirty-four, three sixty-two.
And there was a question from one of our speakers, and I kind of see where we're going with this. What do you do when you, or what do we do, I should say, the city? What do we do when we come upon a cart that is full of belongings?
Mayor Protem, that was an excellent question.
And if you can also address if it's tipped over and everything's coming out and there's no one around?
Yes, certainly. For that particular situation, we do have a process in place where we work with our current parts, our team members in Public Works. The process, if we do find an abandoned cart filled with personal items. So it's kind of a unique situation to every case, if you will. If we see it full of just papers and empty wrappers and bags full of trash, then we'll actually pick it up and then call the shopping cart company. The shopping cart company does not remove major trash like that, major items, personal items, excuse me. But if there's personal items, clothing, chair, tent, things like that, what we, current process is to initiate a case, post a notice to abate, giving them a reasonable, him or her a reasonable amount of time to remove the cart and their items from the public right away. Typically, that could be anywhere from, you know, four hours, depending if the person's around, or a day. And then we notify Public Works and they respond and remove the cart. If it belongs to somebody, we will store it for up to ninety days, and we provide them with all that information to come pick up their personal belongings. Not the cart, but just the items that were in the cart. Now, if it's tipped over in the public right away, your second part of your question, typically we'll call Public Works right away because that's a hazard. If it's in the street, we usually remove it right away. If it's on the sidewalk, just posted, standing irregular, then we'll post it with a notice to abate, depending on the urgency of the matter. So like I said, each and every case is different.
Then you have, on the weekends, do you have community workers? And do they do the shopping cart retrieval as well?
On the weekends, we have part-time and full-time code staff working. Community workers, if you're talking about the community service workers, that is run through the Public Works program. Typically, I would have to defer to Michael.
No, I, community services workers don't pick up shopping carts because our current contract is seven days a week, so they're here every day for that.
What was the option two, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes, Mayor Protem, option two would include that part-time person that I was referencing earlier. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, six hours a day, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so eighteen hours. That would allow for the third-party vendor to drop off the carts. They would actually sign almost an invoice to count the carts, so we know how much carts are coming in. Thus, we could backtrack it to the monthly invoices that they're submitting. So when we do go to pay the invoice, the numbers will line up. It would also allow for the stores to send their cart vendors to pick up the carts, and he could let them in and out of the yard.
So Steve, that's a part-time person that's actually stationed at the yard, working to receive both the vendor and potential businesses that are trying to retrieve carts?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We have Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't, doesn't the unions or the markets have a union that governs this?
Councilmember, the grocery industry has a, I would say, a lobbying presence. I think that's why you see, as Alan mentioned, that state statute limits our ability to really be aggressive on this, but just like any other industries that have their representatives lobbying.
So basically, we don't have the local control?
We have, we have limited options, and the proposals that you're seeing today is our best recommendation to use the tools that we have to increase the impact.
This mile radius, it's, so if a market, let's say Staters, has several carts a mile away, their vendors or their collectors can't pick up those carts?
It's not that they can't, it's that they are not required to. So if a cart is a mile and a block outside, they're absolved of any responsibility to pick it up, so it falls upon the city. We look at that and think, hey, wait a minute, carts have wheels, they go further than a mile. And so that's one of the things that we're going to recommend that the council amend into the ordinance to expand their responsibility.
So this doesn't jeopardize the so-called litigation or?
I can't promise you that when this is, assuming that the council's interested in moving forward this direction, I can't promise you that there won't be representatives of the grocery industry here talking to you about it. And this is, this is not a simple matter.
It sounds simple, but it isn't, and I understand. Anytime you include labor unions and stuff like that, it's hard. It's hard to work with them. My concern is, if we do enact one of these options, that we're not going to, we're not going to have the labor come in or union come in and say, hey, hey, this is illegal, you know, there's no way you can do that. Then we're back to square one.
Mayor, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, yeah. I think that the options, if the council directs us to move forward with drafting an ordinance, the options that are going to be presented are going to be supported legally. We're not going to bring anything that we don't think we can defend in court. And I would be, as the city manager observed, it is the lobbyists for the grocery industry more than the labor unions that would probably have the most to say to you about how restrictive or how expensive do you want to make these programs for the particular supermarkets?
The other question I have is Raphael brought it up about the trash in these carts. They're all over the city. First of all, when you take a cart from the property, it's theft. You're stealing from that market or that organization or business. That's theft. Why don't we have the right to retrieve that cart regardless if it's got trash in it or not, or personal belongings? Martin, I guess I have to address it to you.
It's a very good question. It's not one that's, has a very straightforward and clean answer, but I'll give it a shot. It, it's not that we don't have a right to ultimately retrieve it and collect it and get it off either right of way or someplace where it's, it's, it is that one's men's trash is another men's treasures. So when there's personal property in a shopping cart that belongs to somebody, whether or not the car was, cart was stolen, whether or not it was found on the street, obviously, at that moment, the police department is not going to make the determination whether the owner actually physically removed the cart from a supermarket or he stumbled upon it in the middle of a meadow and it's his found treasure. So we have to follow the state law and protect personal interests of the persons whose property is inside that cart. And what Steve outlined is a process by which we do that. We notify them, we give them a notice of abatement. If they don't obey it, we remove it, store it in our yard, and then make those, that property available for retrieval to the owners, to the people who come get it.
If I could just add one more thing, the state law does give us a little leg on this item because if it does impede emergency services, that gives us the green light to go remove it. So if something is out in the middle of the street, we will certainly ask Public Works crews to go out and remove that immediately so that an accident doesn't occur.
Urgency abatement, just like in any other nuisance.
Basically, the right of way, if it's on the right of way, we have that jurisdiction to remove it. Next is the part-time employees. You had indicated perks part of that salary. Part-time employees, I didn't know that they had full, would have full benefits.
Councilmember, under, because we are a PERS member agency, any temporary employee, once they cross a thousand hours of service, become PERS members automatically. A thousand, well, once they cross a thousand period, they are forever and ever covered by PERS. We refer to those as part-time career employees, and that's why there are prorated benefits and PERS costs associated with that.
Well, under that plan, wouldn't it be viable to have a temp agency hire them for us and rotate them? I mean...
Without getting into a whole lot of detail in this forum, generally, the rules that we follow are if a need is permanent, the staffing should be permanent. If a need is temporary, staffing should be temporary.
Well, once we clean, maybe once we clean this up, it'll be temporary.
That would be wonderful.
I don't know, it could be, it could be temporary, it could be years to come. I don't, I don't know. We definitely, you know, I have to say to staff for their, for their time and effort to research is, I, I just don't have an answer. I don't think we have immediate answer up here, my colleagues. But staff has done a great job in doing the research, and Steve and your staff out there, you know, I appreciate what you guys have done. But it is a problem, and if it wasn't, we wouldn't be here tonight discussing it. But I have a lot of complaints, a lot of complaints, especially on the east end of town, where you get four or five carts and one individual keeps bringing them in every day. Here he comes in another cart, another cart, before you know it, he has four or five. And we've seen that out there, Tom, on the east end of town. So, you know, that's, my concern is, yeah, you know, one cart is, six carts, one cart's too many. We need to clean up this, the city on that, and I don't have a solution. I wish I did, but magic wand to take care of this problem, but maybe my colleagues do. But I would have to do some more research on these options before, you know, I can actually say anything else, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Next one we have is Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you, Mr. Alvarado. Thank you for coming out and giving us this presentation. This is a hot topic.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So I have four questions for you. First question. You mentioned that only new businesses, that there's businesses that have been grandfathered, and they're not having to abide by the ordinance. Can you give me an estimate about how many businesses have been grandfathered?
I think we did a survey in September, if I'm not mistaken. My estimate was seventy percent, sixty-five, seventy percent were grandfathered in, and I think it was roughly forty-eight businesses or thirty-eight. I'm going off memory, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. That gives me a little bit better context on that. Second, you mentioned some of the preventative measures, like the locking measures on the grocery cart. So those businesses that are grandfathered, they're not having to put locking devices, just for an example, on their grocery carts?
Yes, that is correct, Councilmember. They're not obligated to abide by these regulations that were adopted in January of two thousand and twelve.
My third question is, the option two mentioned four dollars and twenty-five cents for a cart, and as the city manager mentioned, that is enticing. Makes you want to start a small business retrieving carts for four dollars and twenty-five cents a cart. Was there a, like, a need to, or a survey conducted on similar cities, our size, that had our amount of business? Where'd that number come from?
Those were, those came from the RFP that went out in October. We received two submittals, one through our current vendor Car Track, previously California Shopping Cart Retrieval Services, and West Coast Shopping Carts. California Shopping Cart is a major player in the industry. They're involved with the grocery industry. They quoted us five dollars a cart. West Coast quoted us four dollars and twenty-five cents a cart, and they guaranteed that they will provide the level of service that we need, so.
And just to clarify, you're saying that if, and I want to thank Raphael for posing that question, if a cart is full of items, whether we can't determine if it's trash or personal items, and this vendor goes out there, they will not take that whole cart with all that stuff in there and take it away? They'll leave it there, and then would they contact the city, or what's the process?
Typically, the current process is exactly how you outlined it. They will contact the city. Hey, this cart has too much stuff, it's located at the corner of JFK and Hickok. I'm just throwing an example out there. We'll go out there and we'll notify Public Works. If we could determine it's been abandoned, maybe it's been seen there for a couple of days or so, then Public Works will come. A lot of times, if it's small enough, we'll just take the stuff out ourselves. When I say we, I mean referencing code officers, we'll throw it in the back. We have gloves, and we'll throw them back, and then we'll take that to the city yard and just dispose of it. Call the shopping cart vendor, and they'll come and recover that cart. Just depends, it's subjective, because if there's a little amount of items, they'll take the little trash, you know, a couple pizza boxes, things along that line. But if it's full of items, personal items, clothing, other items, toiletries, things along that line, they're not going to touch it. Then we'll have to reach out to Public Works to have them send a crew to recover it.
And is there an audit done on the vendor to ensure they're not, like, dumping the items out on the ground and just taking the carts? Like, how do we ensure that's not happening?
We certainly hope it's not happening.
I mean, for four dollars and twenty-five cents. Councilmember Marquez will call me if there are things dumped on the ground outside shopping carts. In all seriousness, our crews... In all seriousness, our crews are going through the city all day. One of the things that, after speaking with the mayor, that we instituted this maintained movail, where our employees, myself included, we see things, we call it in. And so I think, Councilmember Thornton, that we'd be able to keep a close eye on that.
Okay. I think that were all four of my questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Wait, Councilmember Marquez?
What's the average cost of a new cart?
The average cost, depending on the quality, target carts are probably about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty. Some are the less expensive, coming from like China, are usually sixty to seventy dollars per cart.
Why went to supermarkets or businesses collecting their shopping carts? Wow, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you. Yeah, so the slide that's up there right now, option two, is what you're recommending. That would basically maintain what we have right now. Where you said we issued an RFP and two came back. And so we would do that, but you're also recommending that we make some amendments to the ordinance, which is on the next slide.
Very specifically, this is not what we're doing now. These are the bids that we have now. What we're doing now is service on a per-hour basis rather than payment on a per-cart basis. That's the major difference.
And you're recommending to go to per-cart? Okay. And so, so I saw some, something mentioned in one of the slides as well about citations and the annual fee. I think it's after this.
Yes, I believe it's in amendment ordinance, ordinance amendment, excuse me. Uh, no.
So my question is, you know, how would that work? Do you guys, do you have a number in mind already as far as the annual fee? Does that pertain to the grocery stores, something that they're going to have to be paying every year? Or how does that?
Yeah, that fee would be, need to be determined. And what we would suggest, if we moved in this direction eventually, to mold it into the business license process, to make it simple for the businesses, because we still want to be business-friendly, of course, to our grocers and those that have carts. So that's how we would approach that piece of the puzzle.
Okay. And then the non-complying stores, that would be for grocers who are not picking up their carts. They're just leaving them, relying on us to return them to them. And I'm assuming you also have to come up with a number for that, right?
The current fine is fifty dollars in our ordinance, and we would look at, we would look at that and see if that needs to be adjusted based on the new provisions.
Okay. And you, so you also had statistics about, you know, how many carts, on average, you're picking up per month and then per year? And there was a number up there, about sixty carts that, on average, are recycled. Of those five hundred per month, or I think it was like six thousand per year, or something like that, are they primarily coming from one or two grocery stores? I would assume there's a handful that they're mostly coming from, but is there a major contributor to this that you're seeing?
You know, it's been a mix, Councilmember. We've gotten from grocery stores and also.
Yeah, and a lot of the carts that get disposed of are unmarked. Because the state law does talk about those carts that are marked, and it's very specific. So, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the majority of those carts that actually get disposed of are unknowns. We do not know who they belong to.
Okay. Let's see, my next question, so option two, the recommendation is, it would add about thirteen thousand dollars plus another about fifteen thousand to the thirty thousand that we're talking about, right? So thirty thousand plus thirteen plus another fifteen.
Go back to my numbers.
I think there was an extra thirty in there somewhere.
Okay, so in total, it would be thirty. And that thirty includes the fifteen and the thirteen thousand.
And again, that's based on what we forecast will be collected. If more are collected, our costs will go up, but then again, we'll be solving the problem more quickly as well.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was in addition to the thirty. Thank you for clarifying that. Let's see here. I mean, I like the recommendations so far. What you have here, I think if we can, if we can definitely take out that one-mile radius that we currently have, and then if we can start implementing some of, maybe the grandfather clause, you know, if we can extend the ordinance to include grocery stores that have been here for a while, I think all of this together would incentivize the grocery stores to take care of their shopping carts in the first place. It'll save them money. So, let's see, other than that, just wanted to mention as well, if there's some possible way of maybe extending this to like the homeless-to-work program, it might be a little difficult, but, you know, giving an opportunity to some of those folks who are coming through the program to maybe work, you know, in a part of this. So just an idea in there, but that's all the questions I have, and thank you for the presentation. You know, I think this is something that will be really good for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, sorry, thank you, Steve.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm kind of hearing at least some consensus, or just want to make sure that at least there's consensus or majority to bring this item to the city council meeting, a regular city council meeting, to recommend option two, which is the thirty thousand third-party vendor with weakened coverage and ordinance amendment.
Whenever you're done, Mayor, I just wanted to, question for the council.
Okay. Ordinance amendment, and then also, which includes, you know, removing the, well, basically requiring the old ones to participate.
Okay, that was exactly my question. There's an amortization process which can be put into place.
And then also, if you guys can, you know, look into incorporating, and I know it's a little difficult because the homeless-to-work, we work with a third-party, with Salvation Army, but, you know, just seeing if there's any way to get them to, you know, to help out, too. Any way like that. But the main recommendation is, or direction is option two, with the ordinance amendment requiring the old ones.
Mayor, thank you for summing all that up so quickly and so effectively. As far as a sequence, we would recommend that we come back to you with the shopping cart retrieval contract right away. The ordinance is going to take a little more time, but I really think that we need to get going on this as quickly as possible, and changing that contract is step one. And if there's support for that conceptually, we'll get that back to you as quick as we can.
Okay. Councilmember Thornton, do you have a question?
But Tom, how long is the contract for?
A couple-year contract, Steve, I haven't, I haven't. Three-year, and options to extend if it's going well, and provisions to cancel if it's not.
Typically, three years with two one-year options.
But there are performance requirements in these contracts. We're not married to a contract for three years if it doesn't work out.
Okay. All right. Seeing that's the direction, and to put that on. Okay, and any, and this kind of relates to the budget one. I mean, I guess if there's any, we've kind of pretty much spoken about it, and guess there's any requests or communications. We'll have Councilmember Thornton, or was this from before? Okay, it's okay. Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, this, the item A three that we're on, does it have to be about the items on the agenda today, or this can be general study session, like requests, or? It's just two quick questions. Because I know we were previously supposed to have a presentation regarding the College Promise Initiative and also the homeless-to-work program. Those have not happened yet. So I was wondering if they're currently scheduled in the future for study sessions, and if so, when?
The schedule, because Tom and I, we work on that. So I think he's going to try to pull it up.
I'm good. If we could, if you go on to your next question, I'll have this pulled up by the time you.
My next question is, can we go home? No, that's the two questions that I have.
Okay. We do have the answer. March twelfth is scheduled for the Promise Program, as well as the Homeless-to-Work Program, as well as a discussion on cannabis zoning.
On March twelfth?
On March twelfth.
Okay.
We will also, yeah, we'll, as the mayor mentioned, I'll work closely with him to make sure that we're remaining responsive to the council's request for these items.
Thank you, Tom.
Councilmember Marquez?
Did you have a few?
Yeah, real, I mean, we're on three, A three, right?
Yeah, just if you had any requests or just communications or comments.
What I like to do is, for our next budget year, is bring up about the extra or the additional rescue squad unit. Now that we're growing out there, especially in the east end of town with all the home developments going on out there, and also on the south side of town, I honestly believe that we look at adding another rescue squad out there and bring that up for a future, near-future discussion and see what we can do. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Marquez. And seeing there's no more comments, we'll go ahead and adjourn at seven twenty-three PM.